And before we start, if we can salute our flag. If you're able, I would ask you to stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Hello?
Yes, in accordance with Governor Baker's Declaration of June 16th, 2021,
I can hear you, Janet.
granting certain pandemic-related authorizations.
No, I just, they must be getting ready to start, so that's my shout.
Oh, okay. Oh, it's you, Bill. Hi.
How are you doing?
Granting certain pandemic-related authorizations related to public board and town meetings and recently extended until March 31st, 2023. This meeting will be conducted both in person and virtually via Google meets. The meeting may be recorded by SMAC, cable, television, and broadcast live, and may be livestreamed at www.stoughtonTV.org. A recording of the meeting, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings will be posted on the town's website and/or SMAC as soon as possible after the meeting if live broadcast streaming is unsuccessful. Times or approximate and items may be taken out of order at the chair's discretion. I would like to add before we start that our meeting is being held at SMAC today, and that's because the Great Hall was booked with another public hearing. So with that said, today is the hearing for... Just a minute.
To set tax classification?
Yes, to set tax classifications, to vote on the residential factor. They'll be asking for a motion on the residential exemption and the small business exemption. With that said, I'll turn it over to the Chair, Mr. Zoll, Chairman Zoll.
I will ask our Assessor Analyst, Deborah Chikorini, who started the preparation process to initiate the discussion of our report, and followed up by Sheila Scududo, our new Director of Assessing, to continue the presentation.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, Dan. First, I would like to thank the Select Board, in particular Chairman Roberts. We've just scheduled this hearing at this late notice, fitting it in. It's a busy week, and I know it's a very busy season for all, but I came on about a month ago, and I would like to also thank the Board of Assessors, Stanley Zoll and Janet Teal, the Assessors' Office staff team, Bill Rowe, the Town Accountant, and Mark, for all your help. I'm from RRG Consultants, and as you know, this time of year is of great urgency in every community while we're preparing and getting approvals for sales analysis, new growth certification, as well as setting the tax rate and all the supporting schedules, as Bill is aware, that must be approved in a timely manner before your third-quarter tax billing can be timely printed out. So with that said, I'm happy to report that Stoughton, Town of Stoughton, has received the DOR approval on the LA3, which is all of your sales that were analyzed in 2021 calendar year. The LA13, which is your fiscal '23 new growth, and the LA4, which is your fiscal '23 report of all values within their appropriate class. So with that introduction, I'd like to at least start with your bulleted front page of the packet, and I just want to review the items that we're going to be discussing this evening. Of course, the purpose of this tax classification hearing, the overview of fiscal '23 valuation changes, the tax valuations and percentages by class. There's also value changes between fiscal year by class. I have a chart for your average tax bill information by class and surrounding community comparisons, the historic local tax rate data, and of course, your what-if option page of your shift, the impacts of your shift percentages, and the assessment versus taxes from last year to this year. At the end of the presentation, we also have our Assessor recommendations. So I'll continue. The purpose of this tax classification hearing. Before the tax rate can be set, the Select Board must hold a public hearing each year to consider the tax rate options available to the town under property tax classification. The hearing is held only after the assessors have determined final values and have classified all properties and reported all to the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, as these values set the parameters for the options the town may adopt. The town has several options in distributing the tax levy among taxpayers under the property tax classification. Use of these options results in a multiple tax rate for different property classes and because they change the components used in calculating that rate. One thing I want to stress here is that we can move, you know, valuation gets moved around, share gets moved around, but the total tax levy always remains the same. So as we go on, the Select Board again must decide whether to tax all classes of property at their full and fair cash value, which results in a single rate, or to reduce the share levy of the residential and open space and shift to those commercial, industrial, and personal property classes, which result in a split rate. Once the shift is known, the tax rate for the property classes can be determined. Additionally, this evening, the Select Board can adopt exemptions and discounts. Historically, these local options have not been suited or adopted in the Town of Stoughton, and the Board of Assessors does not recommend these exemptions at this time. Further research would be needed if adoption was to be considered on either of these. I'll give you a brief rundown of... There actually is three, however, the open space discount is not suitable for Stoughton. We do not have any properties classified as open space here in Stoughton. Residential exemption, that is also not quite suited for Stoughton as this discount is primarily used for vacation communities with many second homes, particularly the Cape and the Islands. Only 15 communities out of the 351 in the state of Mass. have adopted the residential exemption. The small commercial exemption, it's only eligible to those small businesses that have value less than $1 million and employ no more than 10 employees, and the up-to-date information on that was 14 out of 351 communities have adopted the small commercial exemption. All right, now getting on to the crux of why we're here, and let's take a look at what happened to the values between last year and this year. So the overview of the key value changes. Fiscal '23 real estate and personal property. As required by law, we use the calendar year 2021 to establish those values and analyze all those sales for the assessment date of January 1, 2022. Based on that information, this is the assessor's job to prepare spreadsheets, estimates for the classification hearing, as well as other tax reports that go to DOR. And using the market conditions, as I just stated, the sales analysis for the Town of Stoughton resulted in residential increase of 10.9%. There were eight new single-family homes. Commercial values increased 6.5%, and industrial values increased approximately 8.6%. And industrial, commercial are based on sales, income, and cost data that is also analyzed. So the breakdown on this page, of course, shows the four classes of property. What percent share in fiscal '22 that they occupied, if you will, versus what percent of the total value in fiscal '23? And if you notice, the residential share has grown somewhat, and the commercial, industrial, and personal property has shifted away. That still leaves us with a combined percentage for commercial, industrial, and personal property, CIP, as we refer to it, approximately 19.839%, just under 20%, which is very close to last year and pretty similar and pretty unremarkable, actually, from '22 to '23, which is good. That's stable. That's kind of what you want to be. I'd like you to look at page seven. I just inserted this type of visual pie graph. It explains what we just discussed. So for those that prefer to have a type of graph or chart to see the impact of the 80% residential, the 10% commercial, the 4.9 industrial, the personal property. I combined the personal property because I wanted to stick in there your Eversource and Star Mass Electric. Those are your three utilities here that occupy quite a bit of value every year, and that falls under personal property as well. Go to the next page, page five. That is a chart that shows the new average single-family values, the new average commercial values, the new average industrial values. From fiscal '22 to '23, the single-family value, as we talked about, had an increase of 10.8%. Commercial was 7.6%, and the industrial average is 6%. The new single-family residential value is $474,0512. The new commercial value is $1,147,269. Keep in mind, these are averages. The industrial value averaged now is $1,010,932. On page six, we've outlined what has happened with those averages if we go on to a proposed shift versus last year's shift. And last year's shift was at 1.48%. And the residential tax rate, this is all single-family right now. We're talking about single-family dwellings. The last average tax bill was $6,171. Last year's average value was $4,28,258 at the residential rate of $1,441. That was your 1.48 actual shift last year. The bottom two-thirds of this page uses your new average single-family, $474,0512, times a proposed rate, if you were to go with the 1.48 shift, for a total annual average tax bill of $64,34. That would be about a $263 increase over last year for an average single-family dwelling, which equates to about 4.2%. If you go down to the bottom third, we also use the new value for an average value, an average single-family with the proposed rate of $13,48 with a 1.50 shift. And that gives an annual tax bill for single-family average at $6,396, a $225 increase over last year's average single-family, which equates to 3.6% over last year's bill. The next page, seven, we basically showed the exact same calculations, only this is for your industrial class. So your industrial property last year, the average at $9,31, $651 value. Their tax rate last year at $2420 with the 1.48 shift. Their tax bill average was $22,545. Again, with the proposed current-year '23, if you were to go with a 1.48 shift, at the new value of $1,010,932, times that proposed $2264 CIP rate. They're looking at an average annual bill of $22,887, which is a $341 increase over last year for the industrial class, about a 1.5% increase. And the bottom, which was an example of the 1.50 shift, using that value with the proposed 1.50 shift rate being $2295, their average bill would be $23,200, a $313 increase over last year, and a 1.4. The next chart, I'd like to just point out, I think it's important to see your at-a-glance communities, your surrounding communities. This is for tax rates. I did end up have to use the fiscal '22 rates for clarity and availability. But Stoughton is noted at the bottom, and once again, you seem to be right in the middle, pretty much average, for your surrounding communities, where your last rate, residential rate, is $1,441 with your CIP rate of $2420. On the next chart, we are moving on to residential, excuse me, single-family average tax bills by community. So, you know, if you were to look at the average single-family tax bill from Avon, Brockton, Canton, Easton, Randolph, Stoughton, Easton being the highest, Brockton being the lowest, and how they rank between the 350 sitting towns and the tax bill. Again, Stoughton, last year, the $6,171. Again, pretty much in the middle. I also put in the chart for your county average, and the county average for Plymouth is $6,562. So it's nice to know that...
We're Norfolk.
We're Norfolk.
No, no, no.
Oh, you're Norfolk? My God, I'm sorry.
That's why I highlighted it. I was gonna ask you a question.
Oh, for goodness sake. Thank you very much. My error. I'm very sorry about that. Well...
Even better news.
You're well underway. Yes, that's what I was... That's particularly good news. I appreciate that. Thank you for bringing that to my attention.
I thought they moved and sold the town.
Actually, that's my county, Plymouth County. That's probably where I could... So on the next page, we just included a 10-year chart of your historic shifts, just to give you an idea of where you've been, where you're going, what's happening in the 10-year span. At this point, we have two more charts that are quite informative and might take a little bit of lengthy explanation, but they're, again, at-a-glance, and they're very easy to understand. I'm going to turn it over to Sheila, and she can finish up the presentation. Thank you.
Before you start, you didn't include Sharon in that chart on the prior page.
Sharon, I was... Oh, I did on one page, I believe.
Yes, you did.
On the tax rate.
But in terms of...
I was trying to include comparable communities, and I was informed...
I thought you were...
Comparable communities.
This chart shows all the towns around Stoughton.
Right.
Except for Sharon.
Except for Sharon. So surrounding versus comparable. I guess that's what I was trying to show. This chart would be comparable communities.
Which one?
Residential comparable communities versus surrounding communities.
Really? Okay.
Thank you.
Does Sharon have a one set tax rate?
Yes, and that was the other rate.
Sharon and Easton do.
Yeah.
The one, the one tax rate, single tax rate.
Okay, so my name is Sheila Scududo. I'm the Director of Assessment, and I'm going to explain the next two pages for clarification purposes. So this is the classic what-if shift scenario, which is basically an exercise from the Department of Revenue showing what happens with choosing a minimum residential factor. So on the top of the page where it has classification options, on the left, you have, well, we have, the various classes and what percent of the town that they make up, or of the levy. Below that is the estimated levy, which is $81,697,952. If there were a single rate all across all classes, it would be $15.30 per thousand. Stoughton can choose anywhere from a single rate up to the maximum allowable shift of a 1.71. So the next page details the available choices, starting with a single rate and ending with the 1.71 shift. Column B is the minimum residential factor that the governing body will choose tonight. And column A is the corresponding shift. Column C, in pink, is the residential percentage share, which if a single rate would be 80.82%. At a 1.50, it would be 71.22%. And at a 1.60, it would be 69.31%. Besides that, on column E and column F and column G, it shows what the commercial, industrial, and personal property percentage shares are, followed by column H, which is the total, which is 100%. Column I is the residential levy amount with the chosen shift, followed by column K, the commercial levy amount with each chosen shift, followed by column L, which would be the industrial levy amount, and M with the personal property levy amount. The next column is the estimated residential tax rate with each chosen shift, followed by the commercial, industrial, and personal property tax rate in column Q. The next four, five, excuse me, the next five columns show the single-family average value, which in fiscal '23 is $474,512. Below that are the corresponding tax bills for that average single-family property with all of the chosen shifts. The next column shows the average residential value for fiscal '23, which is $443,975, and the corresponding actual tax bills or estimate of what those tax bills would be with the chosen shifts. The commercial average value for fiscal '23 is $1,147,269, followed by the list of the potential tax bills. Column W shows the industrial average value for fiscal '23 at $1,019,32, and also the corresponding information. And column X is the personal property average value, which for fiscal '23 is $458,913, followed by the percentage, the tax bill.
Oh, at the top. Okay, I'm sorry.
So it's with the 80/20, basically, the 80% residential, the 20% commercial, industrial, and personal property, a small decrease in the residential results in a larger increase proportionally to the commercial, industrial, and personal property, as you know.
Dan, I have some recommendations from the board chair.
Yes. On behalf of the Stoughton Board of Assessors, I am recommending the following actions for the Stoughton Select Board to take. A residential shift factor, 1.50, to reduce the property tax burden on local residents, property owners, and particularly lighter inflationary pressures. Please note the deviation by one or two points. This recommendation will not be injurious. To vote against adoption of the small commercial exemption, since it's discriminatory against certain business entities and was pointed out as only applicable in about 14 communities. To vote against adoption of the residential exemption is to favor residential homeowners where seasonal residents and absentee property owners are a significant portion of the total community residential property owners. That's only about 15 communities in the state actually need this exemption. The open space discount is not applicable to the Town of Stoughton as the town does not have land classified as the open space. Thank you to Sheila Scududo, Director of Assessing, and Deborah Chikorini, Assessor Consultant, for the preparation, presentation of the report. Please address your questions to either of these people. And after the question answered, I will ask them, please choose the residential tax shift as we are getting into crunch time relative to release of the tax bills. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zoll. Okay, so we will open the public hearing, please, to read it into the records.
Town of Stoughton, I noticed a public hearing. A joint public hearing will be held by the Select Board and the Board of Assessors on Wednesday, December 17th, 2022, at 7:30 in order to discuss and determine the residential factor for fiscal year 2023. The residential factor will determine the tax rate for the various classes of real and personal property. The public is invited to participate at the hearing and/or send written testimony to the Select Board prior to the hearing. The hearing will be conducted both in person at the Great Hall, third floor of Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts, and virtually via Google meets, and may be broadcast via Stoughton Media Access Television and livestream. Google meets video link and telephone connection for public comment available on the website, or by calling the Select Board office at 781-341-1300, extension 9212, or email Lwilson@Stoughton-MA.gov by 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting, per order of Deborah C. Roberts, Chair, Select Board.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Cavey. The process will be that our Select Board will ask questions.
We still have a public hearing, sorry. Motion to open the public hearing.
Oh, motion to open the public hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
Apologies.
So the process will be the Select Board will ask questions to the representatives, to the Board of Assessing, and to the representatives, and then they will respond. Then the citizens will be allowed to ask questions to the Select Board or to the Board of Assessors and the representatives. And then finally, we'll end with a summary. If you have a summary statement, that's to the Chairman of Assessing and the representatives. And then we'll close the public hearing and then take a vote. So we heard a little background. I asked the Select Boards if they have any questions. Oh, Vice Chair Cavey or Mr. Gito?
So yeah, I'll keep this kind of brief. First of all, the information's fabulous. In the past, the presentations have always been very good, but you guys definitely have a different style of approaching it. And I think it's, you know, I've learned a lot of things, sort of new information here. And I especially like the what-if scenarios, the way this is laid out. It's very thoughtful and very helpful, so I just wanted to tell you. I really appreciate all of this. So I've done a couple of these, and one of the things that I don't think I really sort of absorbed about it is in changing, shifting this tax burden... absorbed about, about it, is, uh, in changing, or shifting this, this, this tax burden, the effect it has between, say, just, let's just do commercial and residential. So if you go from, from, you know, no shift at all, right, so you just have one, uh, the single family i-is roughly seven thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. Commercial is seventeen thousand, five hundred and fifty-three. But if we look at, you know, let's just max it out, right, you go all the way to the very end, the, the one point seven one, uh, in order to reduce the single-family tax bill by about twelve hundred dollars, you have to increase the commercial tax to almost double, I mean, it's like slightly less than double, the tax burden. And I, and I hadn't really appreciated, to, to this, to that level, the effect that has on, on commercial, uh, real estate owners. Now, the, uh,
I do.
Yeah, yeah, because we have one. So in the past, I think the last year, for example, we, um, given the difference between the residential, uh, tax rates and the commercial tax rate values, or the tax values, uh, sorry, the property values, uh, the difference, I think we, we err on the side of keeping it lower, that was a recommendation of the Board of Assessors, because at that point, residential could absorb it better than the commercial could. Um, and this year, there's sort of a modest increase from that one point four eight, it's one, you know, one point four eight to one point five. Um, in, in your thinking, you know, I, I, ultimately, I trust the judgment of, of the professionals here, you guys have been doing this a long time. And so, but I would like to understand, uh, given, like, that, that seems like the commercial sort of has, has, uh, uh, done better than it did, had, it was last year, why the shift was only, you know, two basis points, only two, two, uh, you know, zero point two, uh, versus, you know, maybe, you know, one point five two or one point five four, or something like that. It still seems, like, it seems like you're increasing it, but it's, it's very modest. Is it an effort to, to not, because of that, the sort of, uh, imagining perhaps that, 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 that big shift, like, to, to get a couple dollars reduced for the residential, it does, it does sort of amplify on the, the commercial and industrial. Is, was that the thinking, is that, is that the sort of the balancing act that you're, you guys are, are looking at? Or was there something else in mind when you went to one point five zero?
It's sort of a balancing act, um, and also, uh, staying within the, um, uh, general parameters that we've stayed the last number of years, uh, and as I men- mentioned, my recommendations, and I've been, since, uh, given more discretion, uh, to the Select Board than maybe the, well, is the city, uh, deviation one or two points in either direction would not be injurious. We're, uh, not talking about, uh, you know, being in a, uh, serious recession or, uh, somehow at the top of the real estate line, or, uh, you know, or in terms of, uh, or, uh, economy, uh, so that, um, something is, is so delicate that, that, you know, one or two points would, uh, in either direction would, would cause a, a problem.
Okay. So it's just, um, sort of stay, staying kind of conservative and, uh, and not have, trying to have too much of a, of a, a large impact with the big shift, uh, versus what was done last year, that's the idea?
Yeah, I mean, if you went to, as an example, one, if you thought one point five two would be more your liking is, uh, relative to the residential taxpayers, and, you know, we don't consider that insult to our, uh, our research. Is that, um, and as you see, um, based on sensitivity analysis, if you change one figure in one direction, another figure is going to change a little bit in the other direction, but it's not going to be a, a huge, uh, um, difference, um, you know, to any of the parties.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
And Mr. Zoll and Sharon and Deborah, before we go on, so what we were looking at is the recommendation of one point five zero, but you mentioned one point five two for our viewing audience, can you, because I don't know if they can see this information, can you just talk a little bit more about what that incremental, um, point oh one or point oh two difference from your recommendation actually means? In terms of the individual residential homeowner or that individual, um, commercial business?
Do you want me to speak to that?
Okay.
Okay, so we were, you were looking at the one point five shift, and if we look at a, sync, if we look at column T, residential, single-family, um, with an average value of four hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars, the tax bill would be estimated at six thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars. If you were to go to a one point five two shift, that particular same single-family average-value home would, the, the tax bill would decrease by, what, about thirty dollars? However, the increase on the commercial, industrial, and personal property is not that same thirty dollars, because the commercial, industrial, and personal property only represents approximately twenty percent. So there's a much higher corresponding difference when you shift. With, with each percentage of shift, it's magnified, the effect is magnified on the commercial, industrial, and personal property. So have to bear that in mind.
The hard, the hard numbers are, to reduce a single-family by thirty-three dollars, you'd have to increase industri- uh, commercial by three hundred and forty-four dollars, and industrial, you'd have to increase by three hundred and three dollars. So you'd basically be, you know, adding together, so six hundred and fifty dollars that you'd have to increase to commercial, industrial, in order to save yourself thirty dollars on the other side.
And that's using the average.
Averages.
And almost no one considers their property average, or, no one seems to fall into that average category. So if you're talking about a property that's, a commercial property that's millions of dollars, then their tax bill is substantial, so.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. Go ahead, Deborah.
I was just going to add that, you know, our charge as assessors is to, you know, be sure we fear inequitable throughout the town, and that's really what we strive to do with, with everything you see here. And that's, that's key, and that's why we're here, so. It's, it's not an easy job.
Oh, it's not.
It's not. Because it's like a balloon, if you pull one side, the other one inflates, and then you pu- uh, squeeze other side and the other one. Right? Uh, Mr. Gito, did you have a question?
I do. Um, I guess I was looking at it from a little different perspective, more, more to what services does this town provide, and, uh, to whom? And we are becoming more and more a bedroom community, rather than an industrial or commercial community. And, um, that, the implications of that, in terms of what services need to be provided, is a lot different. It's the people that, uh, that are looking for many of the services that we get. I mean, we plow the roads, that's for everybody, business and, uh, residents. We provide police and fire protection, uh, for the most part, that's about the same. But the technology is changing in that regard as well, in that, uh, commercial and industrial facilities, uh, have and should have, and probably do require, because of insurance purposes, uh, surveillance in their property and, uh, all sorts of things in terms of, uh, uh, fire protection or, uh, alerting to a fire, so that, uh, the amount of, uh, responses changes, I think. So I, I I've looked back at, uh, the, uh, tax rates, the, the numbers from nineteen ninety-five, which I believe were provided last year and, and in prior years. And they've gone all the way from, uh, about one point three, uh, three to, uh, one point seven five, and have had, uh, major shifts some years. We went, uh, from one point six nine to one point five five, a point one four difference in one year. Uh, and in the last few years, we've been settling around one point five to one point, uh, four, five. I think that's the range pretty much, uh. We talk about the need for business and, uh, upgrading commercial property, and I think if we mean that, then we need to look more toward putting the, uh, the tax burden where the services are provided, as opposed to, uh, sort of hammering, I would say hammering, that may not be the right word, uh, the industrial and commercial, uh, folks. People across the board in business, I think, are hurting and have been, and I mean, we see that in, uh, in the newspaper every day. People have a hard time finding people to work, the cost of product is, uh, is increasing, and, uh, I, I, my sense is that we ought to be going in the lower direction rather than the higher. And, uh, just to correct a statement, uh, that my colleague made last year, we, we were given the opportunity to, uh, the recommendation for one point five last year, and we set it at one point four eight. Uh, and I think we should be proceeding along that course. I don't know what the number should be, I would make it, I would continue to go down, I'd go down maybe only one or two points. But I'd either go to one point, uh, four seven or one point four six. But I think we need to have a serious discussion as a board as to what it is that we consider to be appropriate for, uh, for the town, given, given the circumstances that I, that I've put forward. And, and I'd be happy to listen to, to alternative views on life, but, uh, but that's pretty much where I am on that. And I, I, you know, I, I guess if I were looking two or three down, years down the road, I'd be getting in the one point three, one point, uh, four zero, rather than, uh, than going the other way. Because I think that's, that, I think that's fair to, uh, to have people pay for the services, as opposed to having somebody else do that. That may not be good news.
But it's honest, you know, um, some of our most significant services, like, you know, our schools, uh, uh, number of human resources, uh, or, or human services, recreation, uh, these do not in any specific way really benefit, uh, the commercial businesses in the town. Uh, they benefit the residents. And to have, uh, that, you know, that burden move to commercial, I can see it, that's the wrong case to say, they're not using it, why are they paying for it?
I just wanted to give Mr. Carrara an opportunity to ask questions or make comments.
It's probably more informative comment from where I sit. Um, I agree with Mr. Gito on some of his line of thinking, but I also see what we need in the town, too. To go beyond the recommended one point five and, and see that burden grow on, on the business end. Stats can show the best things in the world about which companies are selling the best and stuff like that, but there's a lot of us out there that live in the town and have found things to be way out of line. We were paying twelve dollars and eighty cents for a ten-foot piece of pipe, now we're paying seventy dollars for the same pipe. So I don't want to hear that industrial's booming and all that. We're starving for help, you can't get it. Mr. Gito's absolutely right, it's everywhere. Every one of my friends, they're talking about, can't fill positions, trucks are parked, and we have to pass it on to the homeowner. So if we shift and go this way, are we going to be able to put somebody septic in or sewer in, they're not going to be able to afford it? It's just, it's, I don't know where we're headed. I don't want to use the word recession, but I, I've seen some, um, and I don't consider myself old, I hope, but I saw my father, my business is sixty-one years old. I saw my father go through some pretty tough times. And the shift, sometimes it hits hard. So we have to think about that, but I agree with Mr. Gito, we have to think about where we're going and what we're doing. And, you know, just filling positions because we want to fill positions, because we think we can. This is where it starts, here, where are you going to get the money?
And this is a good time to answer Mr. Gito's, uh, initial questions. So where are we going? This is a good time to start planning, because we just, um, had our bylaw rezoning change. So if we're looking at that eighty-twenty rule, so if twenty percent of the, of, uh, what we're talking about, twenty percent are commercial businesses, then one way is to plan to increase the twenty percent to X, whatever that number is. But when we're looking at the rate that we're getting ready to approve now, we're looking hindsight. So what is the proportion of residential to commercial businesses? But going, but that rate, looking at that historical information and, and the rate that we're setting today, hopefully, when we take a vote, it's going to impact us going forward for at least one year. So within that one year, we have to do something, we have to affect a change, bring more businesses in to spread the burden out. And we did just, once again, just get our bylaw zoning change. So we have to do something about it, that takes planning. But the issue on the table today is, well, what do we do? What do we feel comfortable doing? We want to be in balance, right? We don't want it to be too burdensome on the commercial and too burdensome on the residential. We just kind of, I guess you call it quote-unquote, the sweet spot, but, and that's what the assessors are recommending. That's, that's sweet spot. But we also have to hear what, what Mr. Gito is saying, Mr. Carrara is saying, and Vice Chair Cavey is saying.
To, I mean, uh, Madam Chair, there, there is also, you know, the, the reality that, that our, uh, population's aging, um, I think that, I forget what the census showed, but it was, on average, you know, Stoughton residents are older than they were ten years ago. Uh, and, uh, that means that a lot of this tax burden might be also absorbed in the single-family homes by people on fixed incomes, we expect that. Uh, which also, you know, we, we have to take into consideration, uh, when considering the shift. I know we still also have a, we have a public comment section, so I don't want to pick up any more oxygen here, but.
So let's take, have, uh, take an opportunity for our citizens to share, to comment, and I can, uh, Ms. Walsh has raised her hand, and then we'll recognize others that raise their hands as well. Ms. Walsh?
Cynthia Walsh, ten ninety-six Fox Street, Precinct Three. Um, it appears we have, uh, been given our U. It appears we have been given, or you have been given, a choice between one point four eight and one point four five zero. I would encourage you to go for the one point five zero. I know it's only thirty-eight dollars difference on the average house. But we have to take into consideration several things. One is, we have an artificially high tax burden because of two overrides. And the override votes weren't one hundred percent. So we're paying for the high school, I don't know, what are we, on year five? So there's fifteen more years. And a fire station that hasn't even been built yet. You need to take that into consideration that, uh, there were people that voted no, and they're still going to get that tax bill. As a previous speaker mentioned, Stoughton is one of the oldest communities population-wise on the South Shore. We have more seniors in Stoughton than children under eighteen, according to the master plan. There's no place to downsize to in Stoughton. You can't free up housing to bring in younger people because we're not building senior housing, either market rate or subsidized. We haven't built anything in, what, thirty, forty years? So someone like me, there's no place to go. I live in an eight-room house on ten acres. I mean, the town could do well, but, um, the tax bill... I mean, this is, I get the phone calls, people just see me on TV, I guess, and they figure I have some sort of magical wand. I don't, folks, I get the same bill you do. And I have to pay it just like you do with the same kind of, um, strain on the budget. Fortunately, as a retired state employee, I have, I did get a COLA this year. But whether you, whether you pick one point four eight or one point five zero, my COLA will just about cover it. Thank you, State of Massachusetts. My property is actually zoned industrial, although it is taxed residential because I live there. Someday, it may yield more tax dollars than it does now. I think we've been incredibly friendly to business as far as, um, putting in the sewer. And it isn't just the price of the sewer or the incredible hassle of the sewer. If you live on Park Street, it was, it was a nightmare for months. Holes here, bumps there, um, it was really ripped up. I think that if you look at the comparison of other communities, their, um, commercial tax rate is higher than ours is. So I think we still have, um, some, uh, when we have businesses looking at Stoughton, that's something to bring up as an option, that if they were to go to Avon or they were to go to Randolph, their tax bill would be higher than in Stoughton. And Stoughton has, I think, I don't know about Avon and Randolph, but we certainly have highway access to all the major routes in this area, one of which goes by my house. So I, I think we've, we've been very friendly. We don't have a lot of folks coming in upset about expansion. And certainly not in my neighborhood, and I live near Camp Nellie Park. My neighbors have been, for the most part, very tolerant of the traffic that comes in. I guess eventually we'll get a light at Turnpike and Park, but, um, that's a major industrial area in Stoughton. And we, we've learned to live with it. And it's expanded and expanded and expanded. When I was a kid, it was open space. It was a hunt club. And I don't recall my parents picketing or anything else as it became an industrial park that continues to expand. At night, I'm completely surrounded. There is no dark at ten ninety-six Park Street because it abuts a twenty-four-hour trucking company, a twenty-four-hour Alzheimer's home for folks with dementia, and in the back, it abuts Camp Nellie Park. So night never falls at ten ninety-six Park Street. And I don't, as much as I'd like to, we're never going back to that quiet, open space, wandered-through-the-woods area that I grew up in. And I appreciate the fact that these folks are paying more. I think the town's major expense is the school system. And they make a contribution to that, probably in the hope that some of those students will come and become employees of theirs. But that's a major cost, and they pay part of that. Or if we go one point, either one, they're going to pay slightly more for that than the average resident. But I want you to remember that a significant portion of the town, I think it's fifteen percent of the homes are owned by one person, just like my place is. So that tax bill doesn't come to a two or a family or a three or a family. It comes to one, and most likely that person's on social security or receiving a pension. So thank you for listening.
You're quite welcome, Ms. Walsh. So Ms. Walsh is recommending, she's agreeing with your recommendation of the one point five oh. So did the, to the assessors and representatives, do you have a comment or to anything that Ms. Walsh said? A lot was comment, but I don't, I didn't hear a question in there. But if you wanted to set, shed some additional light?
I'm not sure how much, Sheila Skidoo, I'm not sure how much additional light we can shed on this. Chairwoman Roberts.
Okay, and then Mr. Gito.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes.
The job of the assessors is to provide information to us.
Yes.
The decision is a decision that the board makes.
Yes.
If, if there are technical questions that we want to ask the assessors, I think that's an appropriate thing. But, but to give the burden for them to, to respond to, uh, to, to, uh, any comments, unless there's an error in the, uh, in the interpretation, I think we, we shouldn't put that burden on, on them. I would like to, to...
Before you go, Mr. Gito, I just wanted to ask if there were any other citizens' comments. Because sometimes I can't see online. And after Ms., uh, Ms. Walsh spoke, I said we were going to ask if there were any other citizens' comments before it goes back to the board. So sorry about that. Anyone else? I can't tell. Okay, with none, I'll go back to Mr. Gito. Thank you, Mr. Gito, for your patience.
I'm, uh, I'm not disputing anything that, uh, you know, we have to decide on this. But there are some factual information that I think we need to, to take a peek at. When you look at the number of properties that are residential, the total number appears to be somewhere around, uh, eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven, plus or minus a few.
Right.
The non-single-family homes, there are twenty-two, twenty-nine. And that would be the condos, the mobile homes, the two, three families apartments, multi-use residential. And, uh, and that means basically that the properties, the residential properties, about seventy-five percent are single-family homes. Twenty-five percent are, uh...
So you're looking at information from last year?
I'm looking at information from last year. And perhaps I'm wrong on, on my, my estimates. And I'd be happy to, to stop now and, and be corrected. But I would like to go on after that.
I don't think they have that information. You do? It's similar?
It's very similar. It is an increased, the, the residential burden has increased slightly, but it's not remarkable.
No, that's absolutely correct. The, uh, I guess the point that I was getting to is there are somewhere around thirty thousand people in town. And a lot of these non-single-family homes are apartment buildings. And so they capture many more people than the single-family residents. I just did an estimate of saying, let's just say that there are two and a half people per, per household. I don't know what the number is. But, uh, you know, if we have an older population, that probably is closer to being right than, uh, than having four or five, which was typical when I was a child. So that would mean that we have somewhere on the order of about sixteen thousand of those people living in single-family homes and about fourteen thousand living in non-single-family homes. So that's about a fifty-five, forty-five split. And so there are places for people to live in town that, uh, that don't want to live in a single-family house. And that has been increasingly true over the last ten or fifteen years. We've, uh, we've increased multifamily housing in town quite a bit in that time. Maybe not enough, but, but we have been doing that. So people are not necessarily locked into their homes if, you know, I've been trying to get Julie to move into a smaller house.
She won't do it.
But she won't do it. Trust me. I, I've worked on that.
So, Mr. Gito.
So I, I guess all I'm trying to say is that there, that, that we need to, we need to, after this meeting, we need to really sit down and talk about this issue. But in the shorter run, I guess I'm still on the side of the changes that I had recommended before. But look, I'm not, I'm not going to die on my sword, no matter what, what we do.
Well, I was just, uh, if there are no further questions, we can close the public hearing, and then we can consult and discuss amongst ourselves. That's where I was going with, wanted to know if we needed the Board of Assessors.
Well, I just wanted to get on the record some, some other information that, that's there.
I was going to give you that opportunity after we had closed that. Yes, great.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So thank you very much. Okay, so now, to further discuss the issue, we have one recommendation, which is the Select Board, I'm sorry, which is the Board of Assessors, that's the one point five zero. We have also looked at, um, going down to, what was that, Mr. Gito, one point four seven?
Well, no, we, we looked, I think the information that we have is one, one point four eight.
One point four eight.
And we discussed one point five two. I think that was...
I was just talking about, like, I really wanted to get an idea about, like, if you shifted just a little longer. In my example, I could have gone either way.
Yeah.
But the assessors were recommending one point five oh. So we talked a little basis points lower and basis points higher.
So I'm actually, just to give us an opportunity to actually, you know, deliberate here, I'm just going to make a motion, and we can go, go to town on it. And I move that we, uh, let's see, or we be, just that we...
Oh, this is, uh, we have two motions that they're asking. One is the residential exemption, and one is the small business exemption. And this is the, we typically vote down the small business exemption, right? So we can, if, unless you want to change historically what we've done, since it really doesn't apply to us.
So we voted both of them down?
Yes, that's correct.
Right, okay. So if you want to do that first?
For you.
Okay, go ahead.
The motion I was going to make is to, uh, is to, I want to get the wording right here, but we, we're not recommending a shift because you guys have already recommended a shift. So we are, would be implementing a shift, something along those lines, so that we implement a, a, uh, commercial-industrial, uh, shift of one point four eight, uh, in line with prior year.
Is that, is that your motion?
Yeah.
The one point four eight?
So can I get a second on that, and then we will discuss?
Second.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll just begin with, and I'm willing to lose this one. And maybe you might even find, if I'm persuaded, I'll vote against my own motion. But the, the general idea here is just that I, I agree with Mr., uh, Mr. Gito's point here. I think that it is important that we, um, uh, put the burden where the services are. And maybe I'm perhaps being too conservative with one point four eight. But I, but I want to err on the side of, of, uh, a very modest, you know, will be about thirty dollars more for residential, uh, but, but could save the commercial and industrial close to six hundred fifty dollars, uh, in, in, in that burden. So that, that's my reason for making that motion, though I would love to hear, uh, other people's thoughts on that.
Mr. Carrara, you said you were thinking about that as well.
I was looking at, I was looking at... Because of the, the elastic band stretch towards the, the other side. And Steve said it right.
Yes, I agree with that. And then, Mr. Gito.
I'm fine.
You're fine? All right. So the motion on the table, it has been second, and then on the vote, Vice Chair Cavey.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
Mr. G... And I vote yes as well. Then the second motion?
So I would also, this doesn't necessarily be a motion, but, uh, I would like to also, uh, in this case, I just, just agree with Mr. Gito that, uh, this problem's not going away. And it's something that we have to, to address, especially with regard to, uh, senior housing. I, I felt, I've been sort of recommending this for the last four years without us really making any moves on it. It's my own fault, I haven't driven it. But I want to see, um, uh, some alternative housing available for seniors. I know that requires a, a change in some of our zoning, which we've attempted to do, hasn't, hasn't gone through. But we...
I, I agree with, um, that we need the senior housing. But with the Fair Housing Act, you know what that does. We, everybody says, you know, because we put the name Stoughton on it, you know, Stoughton, it doesn't work that way. We're having a tremendous influx from, like, Bedford in that way, this way, as opposed to a lot of Stoughton people getting in because it's just, it's open that way, and that seems to be the way.
That's the law.
It's, it is, unfortunately. I don't know how we can, in the old days, even though it was federal, Stoughton people had first crack at it. And I don't know how you can do that, Dave.
I've had a conversation with, uh, some Select Board members in other towns that are actually, they're making moves in this direction. And some have got, made it a lot further than I have in even contemplating it. I'd like to, to hear some of their views on it, uh, where we could develop some sort of priority for senior residents. But it is, I mean, the thing is, it's, you know, you build it, they will come, right? So like, you, you build it, and you've got an entire state with the same problem. Everyone's going to be looking for the same housing. So, um, if we're the first ones to do it, then we get the influx. Now, can we use that to our advantage, or is that going to somehow harm us? That's, these are the kinds of problems I think we, we have to address, but like, really head-on and, and deal with it.
But at least you've got to step up, even when you're talking to other people, right?
Yeah, there's a couple of other people... Yeah, there's a couple of other people who are, who are working on this, and I have some, some ideas about ways for us to be able to, which I'll get to at some other future date.
And we have to realize that it, it was on one of our articles a couple of town meetings prior, and it was voted down, and for a lot of different reasons, but-
May I, may I ask a question?
Oh, yes, Mr. Jito, absolutely.
Are we having this broader discussion now, or are we going to have a broader discussion?
We're gonna have-
Let's have a broader discuss-
Like you said.
Yeah, we just got a little excited.
Why don't we, uh, think about, uh, making a motion to not, uh, change or have a discount for open space, which we don't have any open space. We do not implement a residential exemption, and we do not recommend a small commercial exemption.
Second.
And on the motion, that's historically what we've done, that's historically our position, correct?
It is.
Okay. I'm just saying it for our viewing and for our audience. So, we have a motion on the table, uh, we have it seconded, and all in favor, uh, Mr. Jito?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cavey?
Aye.
Mr. Cora?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So, I think you have all the information you need, is that true, uh, Chairman Zoll?
Thank you very much. We will proceed to, um, take care of the rest of the documentation and communicate with, uh, the town accountant, town treasurer, so the tax bill will go out a timely basis. Thank you very much.
Great, and thank you so much, and it's so nice meeting you two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have this document that, that just states that the, uh, Select Board has chosen a residential factor of 0.8861, which corresponds to, um, uh, the 1.48 shift to the CIP, and that there is an excess levy capacity of sixty-four thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty-five cents. And that's the amount that could have been levied, um, in tax dollars, but was not. Okay?
That's because of town meeting vote earlier in the year?
I'm, I don't know exactly why that is.
I think it was. It was a vote, vote of the Board of Selectmen. To do that.
Not to levy it.
Okay, that's correct.
I think Mr. Rowe has raised his hand.
Oh, uh, Mr. Rowe, I didn't see your, I didn't see your hand be early, I'm sorry.
Yes, hi, good evening, Madam Chair, and members, Bill Rowe, Town Accountant. Um, we budgeted to, I, I believe, um, leave fifty-two thousand five hundred and ninety-nine, uh, behind in the tax levy as part of the, uh, budget estimate. So, this is probably as close as we can get to that because of rounding to the, uh, pennies. So, this, Mr. Jito's exact, memory is exactly right. He, uh-
Hard to believe for no man.
We did budget to leave, uh, not go to the full levy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe.
Remember, they wanted to give that back fifty-two as a tax break, and it was gonna break down like a bucket.
If this is for, uh, to be read into the records, or this is just our copy?
I'm going to, I plan to attach that in, uh, Gateway, um, as part of the, um, LA Five Classification Hearing Documentation.
Do we need to sign any?
I would like it, if you could sign it, please.
There you go.
That's all you gotta say, kid?
I got my pen all ready.
All warmed up.
I think we need some lines.
You need some additional lines.
There's five lines right above the handwriting.
Okay. My traditional lowest.
There you go.
Thank you. I'll go last. And once we have the signatures, we'll go to the next, um, agenda item. Thank you very much. I didn't sign yet. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Jito, can you pass this down, please?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
You may have to adjourn their meeting.
You wanna adjourn?
No, we have to do something else, don't we?
The assessors. The assessors have to adjourn.
Make a motion, we need to make a motion to adjourn the Board of Assessors meeting, because this is a joint meeting. Janet?
This is a joint meeting, I would just ask, uh, put a motion to adjourn the, uh, assessors meeting within the, the, uh, joint meeting here, the Select Board of Assessors.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Chairman.
All in favor?
All in favor, aye, uh, Janet?
Janet?
We couldn't.
Yes, I second that.
Okay, and the, all in favor? Yeah.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Unanimous. Thank you very much, and I'll see you next time. Great.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night to you, Ms. Teal.
It was a pleasure meeting you. Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Just thirty more seconds, and we'll go to the next.
Oh, my gosh, much later than I thought.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
Almost done. Fun time.
Nine o'clock?
Okay, the next, bye-bye, Mrs. Zoll, Chairman Zoll. To continue the stipend for Mark Tisdale, interim town manager, while providing onboarding support with the new town manager, Thomas Coulter. So, we wanted to honor, uh, Mark's ever-evolving contribution to the town while he's returning to the title of Executive Director of Development Services slash Town Engineer. Mark continues to carry the task of orientating and mentoring, uh, Thomas Coulter. We would like to consider giving him a stipen, stipen, uh, for his continued efforts. So, one thing we would like to do, if the board wishes in their favor to, if, yes, stipen, how much, and then for how long, so what's the duration of that stipen?
So, I'll kick this off by saying that, that, uh, you know, Mark's, Mark's contribution has been significant, and I've, I've heard it from, I mean, obviously, I've always had a great experience working with, he's in the room, so I'll say, Mark, I've always had a great experience working with you. But, um, even up till today, I'm still hearing from citizens of the town that are, uh, you know, sad to see you leave this role, who have, um, uh, spoken passionately about the work that you've done with them, the fact that they've felt very at ease over the last several months, knowing that you're at the helm, uh, and so, uh, you know, given how wild, you know, running municipality can be, uh, Stoughton maybe even, even more so than others, maybe I'm just, maybe I'm not correct about that, but, um, what you've achieved over these last several months is, is extraordinary, and so, definitely want, you know, wanna thank you for that. As Tom comes in, and he gets to learn the ropes, uh, understands, you know, the, the things that are, uh, unique about Stoughton, uh, that, you know, you, you can either learn the hard way or the easy way by having somebody tell you them. Uh, I, I do believe it's, it's gonna be useful to have, have you available during that time period. Uh, you ought to be compensated for that additional work, where you're, you're gonna essentially be doing the same work. Uh, there'll be an overlap as you work together over the next, uh, time period. I don't want to, uh, tell you, uh, what, how long that should be, I assume about a month makes sense, uh, a month of overlap. Uh, I did talk to Mr. Rowe earlier today.
Three months?
Three months.
That's what I was thinking, too.
Sounds good here.
So, three months, so three-month overlap, I'm, I'm fine with that. Um, the difference between what he is currently-
Was it two thousand?
Making as town manager, um, versus the salary he'll be returning to during just a one-month period is about two thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars. So, it would be that, my recommendation would be that difference, uh, times, times three. For doing three months. Uh, so, let me see, let me get that number. Two eight fifteen times three. My son could actually tell me right off the top of his head what that number is.
And Aaron Judge got three hundred and sixty million today.
What was it?
So, that's eight thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars. Uh, so, I, I would like, that's, that's my recommendation, is that, that we pay them that difference, that the work that he'll be doing during that time period is, uh, comparable to what he's doing right now, uh, in many ways, he's been perhaps uniquely challenging, uh, in some ways. So, I think that would be fair, and that'd be covered for, for three months. The total will be eight, four, four, five.
Before we move forward, I, I know the answer is, yes, we do have it in, in the budget, but, uh, for the record, I would ask, uh, Mr. Rowe, do we have that in the, in the budget line item? Would that be problematic if we did vote and it, for the eight thousand four hundred and forty-five?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, we had done the projection for, um, one month, and we had, we had five thousand left, including vehicle allowance. So, it should be okay, um, but I'd wanna, I'd wanna, you know, run it one more time. But if you wanna, but if you wanna make the motion, you know, subject to appropriation, which is what we do with all contracts anyway, that's a possibility.
I don't think it's too hard to find that kind of money.
Thank you so much, uh, Mr. Rowe. So, that is the motion, that's the motion on table.
I'll make that motion, I wanted to make sure that everyone felt comfortable with something like that, uh, but yeah, I'll make-
Subject to approp, sub, subject to-
Appropriate.
I'll second that.
Yeah, so the motion is to compensate, uh, enter, entering an agreement with Mark Tisdale, where he will be, uh, providing orientation to the, to town manager, Tom Coulter, for the term of three months, uh, for a stipend of eight thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars, uh, subject to, uh, appropriation of those funds.
Can I get a second?
You got a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, we didn't have discussion, but, no need. Sure.
Of course.
I certainly appreciate that very much, I really do. And I know I've seen, said this a lot, but I, I really support, really appreciate everybody's support over the last few months. And it's really given me, like, the energy and motivation to really think about doing this in the future. It could've been the worst seven months, and it would've gave, it would, I would've went the other way. And, uh, it's, it's given me motivation, and I've enjoyed it, I think, more, even more than the first time I did it. And, uh, there's been a lot of support from this board and our, our town employees, for sure. Uh, it's, you're only as good as your team, and I really mean that, and I'm telling you, like, you know, you, you really are. I mean, if, if your key members on your team wanna take you out, they can. And it hasn't happened yet, so, uh, so I really appreciate it, and, uh, yeah, the, the overlap's fine with me, and I've had discussions with Tom today and a couple other times, and I think he's gonna be really great for our town, I think you made a good choice. He's got a great personality, I'm looking forward to learning a lot from, from Tom, so I appreciate it, thank you.
That is so wonderful to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you for all that you do. Okay, the last-
Did we vote? Oh, we did vote.
We did, yeah.
Okay.
We're all set. Uh, is the consent agenda, does anyone wanna pull or have a comment?
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, motion to adjourn?
Let's, oh, uh-
Oh, do you have anything?
Let's assign that before we leave, so that, that they're able to do their, their, uh, their work, but I, motion to adjourn.
Can I get a second?
Second. I just wanna make sure we sign the, uh, uh, that, that license or the, um, application-
Appliquing.
Before we leave.
Do you have one, or do we?
No, I think Lena-
Do we sign our own?
No, Lena, well, we'll get back to us. Just nobody run out of the room.
Right, nobody. Adjourn, but no one leave.
Madam Chair, can I say one thing?
Yes, uh, is that Mr. Rowe? I can't tell his-
Yes, it is.
Oh, yes, mm-hmm.
I will be contacting board members tomorrow to get their electronic signature on the recaps, so hopefully, uh, we'll be able to get at least three, uh, tomorrow, so-
Yes.
Absolutely.
What's an electronic signature, sir?
Thank you so much, Mr. Rowe.
It's gonna robot signs for you.
So, where do we leave off? We have a, a motion to adjourn, it's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Good evening, everyone, and we cannot leave until we sign that document. All right.